Third, we'll start by, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Mandelbaum.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
President.
Commissioner Fuels.
Here.
Commissioner Baba. Ashton. Assistant City Attorney, Judge Farming.
Here.
Assistant Community Attorney, Judge Roderick.
Here.
Thank you. And for now, we have this open section for a public comment. However, if anybody wants to talk on any item, if you're looking for talking on PCN 17-0032, would you save that for later? You'll have a comment for it. But if anybody has any comment or wish to address this commission for any reason, may do so right now. Seeing none.
Our mics aren't on. Our mics aren't on.
They're on.
Scooch it up. Yep. Scooch it up. There you go.
All righty. Thank you. See here now?
Yes.
All right. Seeing none of the public comment, we'll move for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to reorder the agenda, moving Agenda Item Number Eight to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, renumbering all the items in between accordingly.
So your motion is to move Item Twelve or Item Thirteen to Eight?
Correct.
That was...
No.
No.
Item Twelve you're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, the motion, as I understood it, was to move Item Number Eight to the bottom of the list and to reorder the others accordingly. So Number Nine would become Number Eight, Number Ten would become Number Nine, Eleven would become Ten, and so forth until you get to the end of the agenda.
Where Eight will be part of it.
Oh, Eight will be moved to the very end of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so, Lord. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes. And we first started the minutes of the training session. I believe it was July what? July tenth? I said...
July fifth.
Oh, July fifth. Excuse me. Where'd you get to it?
I didn't.
Oh. All right, July fifth. Looking for approval of the minutes for the study session on July fifth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the July fifth Planning Commission Study Session as submitted.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the approval for the minutes of the regular Planning Commission Meeting on July sixth. And there are quite a few changes and alterations that have to be made to this. Some of them very, very meaningful. So Commissioner Carey, if you'll state what you're, you have found in the minutes, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of technical changes and one change to vote. For the record, for the July sixth Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, Page Five, Seventh Paragraph, there were, to change the last sentence to that to the the motion was, the motion was, or the request was approved by, by the chairman. Page Six, Last Paragraph, a similar request was made for a, for a five-minute recess. The chairman again granted that, that request. Page Seven, there was a vote on PCN 17-0020. I believe that vote was five-zero by the commission. So I'd like to make, make that, that change. And then the last change that I would like to suggest is Page Eight, the first paragraph, the director, the Director Martini had some, had some additional comments that he was going to forward to the staff. Then I'd like to have that added to the, to the minutes.
If I'm not mistaken, we should defer this until those minutes are corrected and then have the motion on it then, Doug. Thank you. So we'll take a motion to defer this, if you want.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the July sixth Planning Commission Meeting Minutes to have staff have an opportunity to make those changes to the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have announcement of committee reports?
Chairman Peterson, you have now there any announcements of committee reports for
Any information items?
Chairman Peterson, members of the commission, we have all information items.
All right. We'll move on to Item Number Nine then. And this will be a public hearing item. And it's PCN 17-0033, consideration of possible action on a request for a major deviation, reduction for area of, what is it, mixed-use area?
Commissioner Peterson, or Chairman Peterson, for the planning issue.
Ian Curtin, Senior Planner. The applicant has asked that this item be continued. There are some, some issues that had come up as we reviewed this item that we need a little more time to kind of work out how we're going to move this through for approvals. And so they'd ask to be continued to the September meeting.
Oh. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to that effect if somebody will make it, please.
Please, this is a public hearing, so you still have to open the public hearing for this item.
We're, we'll open the public hearing if anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And now we'll enter to promotion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to move PCN 17-0033 to the next available agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think Commissioner, Chairman Peterson, members of the commission, the item should be continued to the date.
Certain. So that would be the first meeting in September, which I believe is on September seventh. So...
All in my motion to move PCN 17-0033 to Agenda dated September seventh, 2017.
Second still.
Second that.
Motion second again. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion will carry. Now, we'll move on to general business items. It's BCN 17-0020.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, as you can remember, this item was on the last Planning Commission Agenda. And there is an issue with, with ownership and trying to figure out if the entity that owns this can continue to do business. And there's still a bunch of questions that haven't been ironed out yet. The applicant has asked that this item be tabled until they can get those iron, those items ironed out, and then they'll, they'll bring it back for, for motion from the Planning Commission.
Entertainer motion to that effect, and please.
I'll make a motion to table the PCN 17-0020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. We'll go on to the presentation of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Sparks Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Fred Steiman. I'm an Assistant Research Professor with the University Center for Economic Development at the University of Nevada Reno. And I also currently have the pleasure of serving as the Chapter Secretary for the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. And on behalf of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, as well as the Center for Economic Development, it's my pleasure to be with you today. With me is Julie Hunter, who is a Senior Planner with Washoe County and our Planning Development or Planning Official Development Officer, also with the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. And today, the chapter and the center are pleased to present you your very own copy of the recently published Nevada Planning Guide, recently completed in partnership between the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program, part of the Center for Economic Development. The general mission and purpose of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association is to provide elected and appointed officials, government executives, staff, members of the public and the private sector, with professional development and training opportunities and educational opportunities as it pertains to planning in general. This marries nicely with the overall mission of the Nevada Leadership Program, the program that I direct at the university. Our mission is to work again with elected and appointed officials, government executives, staff, and members of the public and private sector, to really kind of teach the nuts and bolts of government administration. And over the last several years, both the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program have partnered to deliver a variety of programs and educational material, such as the Nevada Planning Guide itself. The Nevada Planning Guide, the recent version that you have in front of you today, was really the result of about two, almost two years of writing. We had eight full-time volunteer writers from across the state compile the guide. And the guide itself contains a variety of information related to land use planning law in the state, as well as the state's open meeting laws, code of administrative ethics, and general funding and financing of government administration as it pertains to land use planning and economic development in general. We have offered to present the guide to every elected and appointed official in the state. Currently, we're making our way through northern Nevada, and then we'll head south and finish up in eastern Nevada. By the time we're all done, we expect to deliver the guide to over 500 individuals across the state. But we do encourage anyone who's interested in learning about the, or about planning in Nevada, to either go to the Nevada Leadership Program's website, or the website of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, and download and print out their very own copy at no cost. In addition to the guide, there's some additional information provided, kind of tucked into the front cover, information regarding the Center for Economic Development at the university, as well as some additional information about the chapter itself, as well as a few professional development opportunities that are upcoming, including the chapter's annual conference that will be held October first through the fourth in Carson City, as well as an upcoming global climate change that the Nevada Leadership Program is proud to deliver alongside with the chapter and other partner organizations. I'll defer now to Julie, who will also have a few comments regarding her position as the Planning Official Development Officer for the state.
Thank you, Fred. So just for the record, Julie Hunter, recently appointed Planning Official Development Officer for the Nevada American Planning Association, also the Senior Planner for the Washoe County Health District Air Quality Management Division. You know, we feel that public health planning fits nicely with the American Planning Association, so we're, we're proud to bring the Health District to the American Planning Association. As the Planning Official Development Officer, I really serve as a reference person to, for planning resources to elected and appointed officials, and help coordinate the exchange of information and provide training materials, such as the Nevada Planning Guide, which I had the pleasure of leading that project with, with the team. We had a really great team. I learned a lot about the nuts and bolts of, of planning. And also to provide opportunities and workshops. So if there is a planning topic that you're interested or a subject matter expert that you're interested in hearing from, please, my card is inside of the planning guide. Please let me know. We can, we know we have an upcoming conference. We can create a session. We can create a workshop, a lunch, a luncheon, a social event, anything that, that will help you with any, any of the planning topics that you're interested in. And with that, that's all. And we thank you for letting us be here.
Move on for a consideration and a possible adoption of Resolution 216, commending Commissioner Art Saber for his services to the City of Sparks Planning Commission. And this will be for possible action. I must get this if it was in my way. I'll be able to give you a big speech afterwards, providing this goes through. I'm not too sure now. Whereas Art Saber was appointed to the Sparks Planning Commission on January 10th, 2011, and served until June 12th, 2017. And whereas Commissioner Saber served as Chair of the Planning Commission in 2013. And whereas Commissioner Saber served as a commissioner to the Regional Planning Commission. And whereas Art served as a commissioner to the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisor Committee. And whereas Commissioner Saber served unselfishly committing his time and knowledge to the making sufficient contribution to the planning process of the City of Sparks during his tenure as a member of the Sparks Planning Commission. Whereas the Sparks Planning Commission meets on a regular basis, requiring Commissioner Saber to attend us at many public hearings, workshops, and study sessions. And whereas Commissioner Saber participated in a Sparks Planning Commission review and approval of the numerous project, major projects in the Sparks, including the preparation and completion revision of the City of Sparks zoning codes and Sparks Comprehensive Plan. And whereas Commissioner Art was already available as a member, sharing his experience and knowledge. And whereas every member of the Sparks Planning Commission, present and past, is proud to have served with Commissioner Art. And whereas the Sparks Planning Commission recognized Commissioner Saber's contributions to the Planning Commission and to the City of Sparks, now therefore be a resolved to the Sparks Planning Commission acknowledgement and sincere appreciation to the invaluable contribution that Commissioner Art Saber has made to the City of Sparks during his tenure at the Planning Commission, passed and adopted the third day of August 2017 by the Sparks Planning Commission. Thank you, Art. Would you like to make a speech?
Of course I would. Yeah, I'm not used to being on this side at the table, you know? For the last seven years, I've been on that side. I really did enjoy it. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff, Doug, especially on things, working with you. Mondo, thank you, all of you. This has really been a pleasure, and it's something I feel deeply is so important to our area and so important to all of us. So thank you very much. Yeah, please.
Make this official. But you come up here and take this off my hands. It's heavy.
Yes, sir.
That done, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm prepared to make a motion for adoption of the Resolution 216, commending Commissioner Art Saber for his service on the City of Sparks Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, I hope. And I thank you again, Art. And, and I would like to make my comment right here. I, when I first came on board, I wasn't too sure I was going to fit in here. But there was time and times again, you turned to me and said, "We're sure glad you're on this board." And it stuck to me. Thank you, Art.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Saber, for bringing your fan club tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to the selection of the commissioners who serve on the Regional Road Impact Fees Technical Advisor Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Oh, sorry, John. John, would you like a presentation?
No.
I'd like to make, make a motion to nominate Commissioner Carey for the position on the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now, I would, we'll have to go back and open the public hearing items for Item Number Eight, PCN 17-0032, consideration of a possible action and request to rezone a site approximately 7.72 acres in a size from PD to, what is it, MF2/PUD residential multifamily.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Curtin, Senior Planner. As a point of clarification, there is a typo in the posting and the noticing. Wherever you see MF2 PUD, it should really be MF2 PD. The PUD, staff has discussed this, we, staff had used PUD in the past to designate some of the areas in the vistas as being inside the handbook kind of area. That zone, that, that classification or zoning code no longer exists at PUD, so we've changed that to PD because that's a district that does exist in our existing zoning. Also, just as some additional clarification, this, procedurally, this case is an anomaly. Under the current zoning classification, areas that are in the zoning code that are in a plan development are not typically zoned, rezoned. As will be discussed further in, in the staff report, this, this plan development is an oddity in that it requires that rezoning as part of the procedure that is required. So we'll, we'll talk about it some more, but it, just to know it is an anomaly and an odd situation. This case, this is a rezoning request from Landstar Companies to rezone a 7.72 acre property from PD, Plan Development in the vistas, to MF2 PD multifamily. The site is located at 2255 Los Altos. You can see it here on the map, highlighted in cyan. It's kind of almost a triangular piece along Los Altos, right across from the Vista Heights roundabout. This site is in the, this says Plan Development. Here's the current zoning classification for this site is PD, and the requested rezoning is to MF2 PD, just to kind of give you an, an idea of what's being requested. This is the, a copy of the development map from the, the vistas, Plan Development. This is Plan Development was approved by special use permit in 1988. That's a, a process that is far different from what we currently do. Currently, Plan Development would be rezoned to PB, and a handbook would be filed as part of that rezoning. That was not the process at the time. In fact, this was the original Plan Development in the City of Sparks. And so there wasn't, there was no history to, to fall back on as the way they did it. And so that's part of why some of the anomalies and the oddities that come out of this, this request and this Plan Development occur the way they do is just because it, it was the first pass. And so there's some things that we do differently now, learning from past experience. Additionally, there's a, you can see the site here is what was originally referred to as Vista Village East, is down here in this kind of southern corner of the, of the site, or of the, the larger Plan Development. Here is an overlay map that's a little hard to read, but the, the best I could put together here, that kind of indicates that, yes, that Vista Village East bubble that was drawn on the original land use map for the vistas also coincides with the, the parcel that we're discussing tonight. And so this, this site, as Vista Village East, has been designated as a multifamily site since 1988, when the Plan Development was adopted or approved through that special use permit. The process for multifamily villages, as described in the vista's handbook, is, is a little different. In order to develop the areas designated as multifamily in the handbook requires that the rezone, that they be rezoned to multifamily zoning district. That is here on page 28 of the handbook. It's also Exhibit Eight in your staff report. It said, "This plan does envision some attached homes." So in that situation, the subject property would be rezoned, example, R2, to accommodate that project when it's proposed for development. That R2 zoning district no longer exists. Basically, that is also just an example of the zoning district that could be requested. The request now is for MF2, which is essentially the successor to the R2 district as well. Sure. The R2 zoning district, although it differs in some small ways from the MF2 zoning district, essentially, the, the density calc's are roughly the same. So they're, they're as close as two synonymous as they, they could be. As I said, that R2 is just a, an example given through the, in the handbook. The handbook essentially knowing that, that, that district may not be what is requested, but is an example of a district that, that would work there. MF2 just happens to be essentially the same, just the, the more modern version, or the one we've adopted currently.
So is it, would it be fair to say that as the city amends its zoning code from time to time, perhaps designations come and go, and, and you look for rough equivalencies?
Correct. That would be accurate. As mentioned earlier, the, the request is to rezone this property from PD to MF2. Staff has added the PD designation, just to help clarify that this is still within the Plan Development of the vistas. The, historically, the PUD designation was used. That was a district in the zoning code at the time. And you can see that in this map here of the, the vistas as a whole, all these areas that are in the hatched, kind of green with the red hatching are all SF15 PUD, which was the, the designation that was essentially called out in the, in the Plan Development Handbook. And so we can see that, that, that practice was what was used historically in the district as well. So the MF2 zoning district is in conformance with the MF14 land use, which is what this property's land use designation, the comprehensive plan is. MF14 allows 10 to 14 units per acre, whereas the MF2 zoning district allows 12 to 14. So they, they overlap in that density. The comprehensive plan also specifically calls out MF2 as a permitted zoning district in that land use category. Staff has received several phone calls and letters and emails from the public and opposition, as is fairly evident tonight. There's some public here that want to comment. I've received about 12 phone calls and 25 letters and emails. The emails that I had received prior to the, the writing of the staff report, you received with the staff report, there was, I believe, 17 additional that have been handed out as, that I've received after this was sent out. So those emails are for you to be able to review and see the, the comments that have been made by the public.
Part of the record?
Yeah.
And publish them?
So there are three findings that are required when reviewing a rezoning application, a rezoning request. Finding one, Z1, requires that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As mentioned earlier, this request is for MF2 zoning, which is permitted in MF14 land use designation. This also helps fulfill goals H1, Policy H1, and Policy H2, which all relate to availability of land for a variety, a variety of housing options in an area that can provide the necessary services. This rezoning will allow the site to be, to provide additional housing. The location of this site is in a mature Plan Development, and will have access to necessary services. Policy CF1 requires that city services will be able to be provided at acceptable levels in order to be approved. There's an attached memo, which should be attached as Exhibit 16, I believe. There's an attached memo, which should be attached as Exhibit 16, I believe, from the city engineer that was attached to the staff report along with all of its supporting documentation that states that the city services, sewer, stormwater, and transportation can be provided at sufficient levels for this type and level of development. Finding Z2 requires that this project be consistent with the surrounding land uses. This is a map of the, of the land use categories in the vistas and the specific subject site is there highlighted in red, and these are all of the existing land uses that are, that are in this, in this area. This site is surrounded by single-family residential, specifically adjacent to this property on the east is Los Altos Parkway. On the north and south is actually open public, or open space, and then on the west side it's specifically, or actually adjacent to some single-family lots. So, single-family and multifamily residential can be compatible uses. This, you know, when, when a project comes in for this, we'll have to go through the administrative review process, and at that time, potential impacts will be specifically addressed. The adjacent open space will also help to buffer this use from, from adjacent uses, or set it back from those adjacent uses. The development map from the vistas that was approved in 1988 shows that the adjacency between multifamily and single-family was, was contemplated and anticipated since 1988. And it also shows that the developer assumed, or the developer saw the single-family and multifamily in this location as to be appropriate adjacent uses. Many Plan Developments in the City of Sparks have single-family and multifamily projects or developments adjacent to each other, specifically Pioneer Meadows, Kylie Ranch North and South, Foothills, Miramonte, and Wingfield Springs all have multifamily adjacent to single-family. And then finally, finding Z3 requires public notice. This case was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 20th, 2017, and notices were mailed to all property owners within 750 feet in compliance with the state law. 269 notices were mailed out. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, or for me, I am available for those.
I just, if I may, Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, and this is perhaps more for the benefit of those in attendance, on a rezoning, the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the City Council, and the City Council makes the ultimate decision. And so whatever recommendation you make this evening will go forward to the City Council. Rezonings are done by ordinance, so there would be a first reading and then a second reading and a public hearing with whatever, when the City Council considers. I just wanted to clarify that.
Also, I, Glat Armando said something, staff is recommending approval for this item, so we're recommending Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval for this item. My name is Ian Creighton, I'm a senior planner.
Mr. Peterson, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Ian? Ian?
No, no, please, no comments after.
Ian, thanks, thanks for your report on, on finding Z1, when you say policy H1, essentially you're discussing a lot about the city services and different things. A lot of things that have been brought forth lately have been sewer capacity, and there was a report done, I think, last October, and was this amount of density included in that report and figuring it out for the sewer? And second of all, just on a lot of the letters and emails we got was a lot of traffic concerns on Los Altos Parkway, especially going down towards the vistas, Vista Parkway, and just if there was any studies done that address those issues?
I'm going to let John Erickson, city engineer, answer those questions specifically.
John, please introduce yourself.
My name is John Erickson, I'm the city engineer for the City of Sparks. With regards to the sewer modeling, yes, we did include that land use in our sewer model, and so all the parcels within the City of Sparks were, were entered into that model, and, and so the sewer is, has a capacity to handle this development. With regards to the traffic study, Traffic Works was the consultant that worked with the applicant, and they have analyzed the, the traffic on Los Altos and have determined that the segment analysis is what we utilize and that the, I believe it's, it's upwards of about 13,000 trips a day, including this project. The, the trigger to go to four lanes is 14,800, so there, there still is a buffer there with regards to having to widen.
Please just have order here, please. Thank you.
So currently, Los Altos Parkway is two lane and that?
That is correct. Yeah. And, and really what the issue is, is, is in the morning, there is a, there's competing phases at Los Altos and Vista, South Los Altos and Vista, so you have the westbound traffic that's trying to make a left turn, turn onto southbound Vista, then you have the commuters that are coming out of Spanish Springs, that's the southbound movement. And then during the school year, we've got a, a school zone in between Prater and Bering that really hampers how much traffic we can move through there. So, you know, I, I would suggest is, is really we would need to work closely with the Regional Transportation Commission and see what kind of improvements we can make at that particular intersection, because that is, that, that particular intersection is the, is where two regional roads come together, so it would be eligible for, for regional funding to make improvements at that location.
That's at the corner of Los, South Los Altos and Vista?
That's South Los Altos and Vista, yeah, that's correct. And if you have any further questions, technical questions with regards to the study, Mr. Lauren Chilson is here in the audience, and he'd be able to address any of those questions.
Policy is the 14,800 daily trips?
That is a regional policy that's adopted. It's, was adopted in the 2040 RTP.
So that's not a City of Sparks policy?
No, that is not. Those, those two, those roadways, Vista and Los Altos, consider, consider regional roads.
And who is in charge of the regional roads?
The Regional Transportation Commission, in which we are a party to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Sir, you have 20 minutes, and please state your name.
My name's Mike Masterson, I'm the owner of Landstar Companies. I really don't have much to say.
Want to add anything?
Questions I can answer, but...
Commissioners, have any questions of the applicant? Yes, sir?
I'd love to figure out how to get this on, maybe it is on. Let me use just a couple of minutes of Mike's time. My name is Lauren Chilson, I'm principal engineer with Traffic Works. I think it's important we make one clarification. The, the level service policy for Los Altos Parkway is D, and the threshold for that policy is actually 17,500. The quoted number 14,800 is the threshold between C and D. The actual policy is between D and E, so I think Mr. Erickson just remembered the nom, the different number there, but I wanted to make that, that point. There's a little bit more margin than what it sounded like there, and I'd be happy to show you that, that policy if you need further clarification, but I want to make that point. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer other questions.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, would you mind kind of explaining for the commission and the public what the difference between level service D and C is?
Sure. All levels of service are characterized, sort of like grades in school, they're A through F, but level service A is exceptionally good, right? Very little delay, very little congestion, you might not even meet any cars around you. And so from a regional planning perspective, we really use D because that's something that can be provided and achieved region-wide, right? We cannot design all of our roadway system to be exceptional all the time, where we'd have eight-lane freeways for every road in town, and that's simply not reasonable. So most regions set a policy of D, that's very common, and what it means is that it's very serviceable, and typically the volume capacity ratio might be something on the order of, say, .7, .7 or 70, the roadways function during peak times at about 70% of their capacity, something on that order. E might be around .85, 85%, and then F is typically a full V to C of 1, the volume is at capacity theoretically. So then you have breakdown conditions at level service F. D is something that's very manageable and very common as a policy.
Thank you. Thanks for, I see your traffic impact study was done August 9th of 2016 for the Miramonte development, looks like that was up there. Was multifamily again considered on this parcel?
Yeah, let me clarify that as well. We did perform a study back in August for the Miramonte project that evaluated those townhomes. This project was, we performed another analysis this, last week for this project specifically that added on to that, it used the Miramonte study as a baseline condition, which included build-out of that section, of the Miramonte, all-approved lots, plus existing traffic, plus the Miramonte project, the 448 townhomes. And then we've added in the traffic from this proposed project, which is, well, we used 108 units, which is the maximum allowed density on that zoning. Reality is, because of topography, there'd probably be something more like 75 units, but to be conservative, we used 108. So that traffic was then added on top of the Miramonte project, so we cover all known development. With adding all that traffic in, we still have acceptable level service, actually within level service C, not even passing that threshold into D, and we show that the project does not have a significant impact.
Commissions, have anything further? Thank you very much. So now, this is a public hearing. At this time, we will take the comments from the public. We do ask you to fill out a request to speak, and you will have three minutes, and I will be very firm on that three minutes due to the size of this crowd. So, going forth, do you have?
Chairman Peterson, I have 37 cards in opposition. If you do not wish to speak, would you like me to read those names into the record?
Yes, please, would you please?
Alternatively, you could include the cards as part of the record.
We don't?
Not typically, but you could ask that they be included?
I really would like at this, this particular time.
Right.
Because after all, we have a list here, you know, so many that...
Okay. For clarification, these 37 are in opposition of this project. I'll just read the names. Evelyn Tiff, Barry Tiff, Irene Connors, Jody Erickson, Tina Clowers, and I apologize if I mess up someone's name. Pablo Mestri, Kathleen Wagner, Jason Albright, Julie Albright, Karen Guttenhoff, Mary Newhoff, Zereta Cummings, Tracy Clanton, Brittany Dutra, Jacob Dutra, Darren Charles, Amy Charles, Jane Stoner, Greg Moore, Louis Palouche, Joan Palouche, Lucille Hill, Nicholas Shanto, Yvonne Shanto, Benjamin Luke, Deborah Reeve, John Wilburn, Carmen Milky, Rosalie Wilburn, William Marley, Joe Heimich, Jessica Medulla, Joseph Medulla, April Santana, Richard Kingsley, Ellen Kingsley, Jana Atkinson, Israel Loomis, Melissa Love, Justin Miselli, David Croner, Gary Godfrey, Susan Godfrey, Joseph Muslustali, sorry about that one, Sharon Heck, Catherine Castaneda, Philip Castaneda, and Michael Kershing. And then...
All opposed?
All opposed.
Thank you.
Chairman Peterson, I have 27 cards in opposition that wish to speak.
That's a city of Perry, it'd be number one?
Argina.
How's your name, you'll just hurt it.
Oh, that's an R, we sorry about that. We are so very sorry, but there's going to be a lot of mispronounced names.
That's okay, don't start the clock till it's my turn.
All right.
Okay, Marley, let me see if I can get this up, honey. And...
We can't hear you guys, and Doug, the voice of silence, we can't hear you at all, Doug. Okay, so the Argina Perry Citizens of Sparks, God's got you grown up. I don't know how I can, I can't take the cursor and work the map, which, okay, okay. Well, because I wanted to point out areas with respect, because this, this project, I've been studying it for 20 years, so if you guys can't figure out the handbook, you can ask me if you can't reach Margaret, okay? Number one, the lot that they're talking about, if you look at page 15 of the map, which Ian showed you, you'll see AC, which is, which is multifamily. And the truth is, that school was moved and all of that was moved, there was never an intent, if you're going to do this, we're going to need to open the planning handbook, and I'm not sure anybody wants to do that. You really don't want to open a design handbook, especially you don't want to open one on the vistas. And with respect to John Erickson about this being a regional road, the Vista Homeowners Association has a contract with the City of Sparks, we maintain Los Altos to the tune of $250,000 a year. So what you permit to go on that parkway has a definite fiscal impact on the Vista Homeowners Association and those of us who live there. So I would respectfully request a fiscal impact report, because I don't think in good conscience we can say this does not have a fiscal impact. Now, on page 22, the red flames there are what would have happened if God had sneezed the other direction the day the Earthstone Fire started. Okay? So if you look up there in the right, you'll see it was still called the Belmar Fire. Upper right corner, can y'all see that? Okay. I looked out from my mailbox and I'm looking at that fire. Now, when this was built, we had Tony Armstrong, Dever Barker, and Paul Mattione. We had honorable people putting together what was, I consider, a good project for Sparks. But you can look at that map, and you can see, and fire's not going to step on anything, so don't count on fire to come in and say they can't do it. But the reason that we have tiled roofs is because it's such a fire hazard. As it tells you on the legend to the map, there are no backroads out of the vistas. When I go down to Alf Sorensen's to swim every morning, there's between 10 and 15 cars lined up to get out of Canyon Vista Apartments and High Rock Apartments. At the time it was approved for high density on that parcel, Miramonte had not been built. The planned build-out for Sparks in 2002 was 7,000 dwelling units for the City of Sparks. We passed that. Los Altos is not a local road anymore, it's a through road. The reason the firemen take road is because it's the fastest road there is. How this thing is set up is you'd be coming off that roundabout, which is the only exit for all of Miramonte and all of the upper vistas. for all of Miramonte and all of the upper vistas. That little tiny street going into the roundabout there, that's it. Now, you're going to, and you've already got blockages, and you're going to put another exit onto Los Altos approximately 150 feet from Goodwin, which is my road. That doesn't make any sense. That this, that's a death canyon up there, the way it sits right now, and to put anything else up there that would block traffic, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about stopping traffic. Okay? There is no, it took, it takes an average of seven lights in the morning to get through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Sparks for the majority of my life. I grew up in Spanish Springs. My first job was a lifeguard at the city, lifeguard for the City of Sparks at Opeo Pool. I've seen the city pursue many grand plans throughout my life, and unfortunately, concept has often exceeded execution. The Vista's planned community, however, has been masterfully executed. It is one of the most sought-after communities in Sparks. Its homeowners' association has held residents to the high standards the neighborhood deserves, and our schools have remained consistently highly ranked. Now is not the time to increase housing density in this area. Sparks currently faces more traffic problems than ever. And I'd also like to point out that the traffic studies provided were done during the summer break, and so didn't really take into account any of the traffic that anyone would experience with the schools zones on Vista, so the backups are significantly worse during those months. Bud Beasley School is already at maximum capacity and is already expanded to the maximum amount the Washoe County has planned for. Additionally, building apartments at the top of a beautiful Los Altos Drive will create an eyesore for those of us who enjoy walking, the miles of walking and biking trails, as well as the view that most of us enjoy from our backyards. I'd like to humbly and respectfully ask our elected officials to adhere to the original plan for this community that has yielded such amazing results and created a fantastic neighborhood for all of us to live in.
Gail? Guttendorf? Is it Gail?
Oh, there it is.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Gail Guttendorf. I live at 2185 Canyon Vista Drive. We are at the cul-de-sac on the bottom of the planned development. Our houses, we adjust right to the hill, and our concern is not only the traffic concerns, but the hydraulics. During the 1997 storm that you all remember, from that hill, we have a very steep incline going up to that property. During that time, with all of the rain, about 10 feet down from the slope from our location going up on top to that property, water escaped about 10 feet down, and it appeared as if it was a flood coming out of the hill. Presumably, that could very well be the shale, but the water had to get out. So, our concern is the hydraulics and as well as the traffic. And I know Bud Beasley School is there. We have some trouble getting in and out during school time, so there is a concern there, traffic getting out on that. So, our concern is not only the traffic, but how this location will do to our location, because we look up. So, we're concerned about that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Please, I'm not clapping after his presentation, because it's going to drag this on for a long time. Please, we can respect it, you're enthused, but please bear with it. Let's move this on as peaceful and fast as we can, please. Edward Barrosa.
Hi, my name's Edward Barrosa, and I appreciate the time to speak in front of you. Let's see. Reasons on the internet, extremely limited access to the property. You ever seen a giant electrical box that cannot be moved, so it's going to limit how to get in or out of the property? Number two, 7.72 acres, a huge part of the area. So, it's not only 7.72 acres that's usable. Number three, individuals, because it's a huge increase of vehicles, can be accessing the apartment complex in the morning, right across the sidewalk, right lane, used by hundreds of students that walk, and riders, students who bike, that use it every day. FYI, on this side of the street, there is not a sidewalk that the children can use. They all decide that they're going to put the complex. So, it becomes way across the, the right lane, the walk lane, and also the path that all the residents use to walk their dog or kid is right there for dodging several hundred cars a day going out of this park. On the traffic on Los Altos, I'm going to talk about traffic control. Four years ago, there was eight cars that went right. Last year, it was backed up to the Silver, Silver Bear School Square, and I predict this year it'll be backed up to the Truitt Park, because of all the houses they're building at the top of Belmar, going to be coming through the school. So, it's going to start, traffic will be out of control. You know, the apartment complex, there'll be noise, crime, and everything, and with the neighborhood it was located, I just can't see it fitting in. When we showed the apartment, there was a Mr. Criddon talking about, he said 30 years ago that he somehow he was reading their mind, that this 7.72 acres, they were thinking about putting in multi-use. And if you saw the map surrounding the building, I seen a family home, which is what it was though, so I don't really know if somebody was really thinking 30 years ago, they would take this rental apartment apart. Okay. You know, I guess the reality is too, everybody in the street was just like, assessed like a $400 assessment from the homeowners' association to fix the ditches this last year. You know, we all paid to use the, you know, to keep the, the green space, to use the walkways for our kids, our car, pay for all this, and I don't see why the 100 people living in the apartment complex are paying, they're not paying for a homeowners' association. We all just keep it the area the way we do. So, I don't really think that's fair either, because people live there and they pay their property back for years. Bud Beasley, that's probably near capacity for the students, and more students, and it's all out, they're building at the top of Belmar, right now, they're crazy up there, the apartment complex, and I feel like we're going to have to go to year-round school again, multi-track, which I think most people in the neighborhood want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Smith, please. Please, no.
Who?
Gary Smith.
Hello. Good afternoon. I've been driving before we go and rezoning the development parcels and come to express my thoughts. In the background, this PUD is the oldest PUD in the City of Sparks and predates current code. Let's remember that this is the building that was one of the ones that was voted on in 2017, and thousands of Sparks citizens, voters, and taxpayers live in the vistas now. The status of this PUD is not consistent with the original plans. What is conceptualized as a master plan for single-family, multifamily, community center, and a fire station does not exist. What is making things difficult, the planning staff are unable to find any documentation or rationale for why the master plans designated areas for multi-plans were never developed. As we have previously noted, the PUD plan to be ignored, why must we put blinders on now and insist that a 30-year-old document is sacrosanct and must be blindly followed? When the Vista HOA member, the planning staff, the HOA asked why this parcel needs to be rezoned, and staff replied that it was a requirement of the planned development handbook. That's a direct quote in your packet. The 2015 comprehensive plan is appropriate for new development on the drawing board, but now we're talking about an established neighborhood almost 30 years old. The Vista PUD was put forth with a mixture of single-family and condos, a community center, and a fire station. The PUD handbook is outdated, not adhered to, and does not reflect what has transpired in the last 30 years. Plan... Status of this PUD, the current, modern neighborhoods of existable multifamily and condo units adjacent, but they all, you know, 20 some years later. To change, I think, is just a bad idea. I would ask the commission now, 2017, not to be tied to a 30-year-old archaic planning document that hasn't been filed, and not take action to rezone this parcel. Will you consider what the citizens of Sparks today say, or will you favor the petition of Mr. Michael Masterson, a resident of Yorba Linda, California? Thank you.
Please, folks, we would like to move this on faster. No applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. William, William Wingham?
Mr. Chairman, suggesting, if I may, could we maybe call up two speakers at a time? We can fill both chairs and maybe save everyone a little bit of time.
Yeah, let's go one at a time for a while, Commissioner, and then we'll get back...
Hard to read this name, but it's, whose phone number? William?
Well, I'm going to put this aside...
Can't read it.
Yeah, it was number six, and I...
William... Could be, yeah. William Wagner...
Yeah, could be.
Yes, William Wagner.
William Wagner, yeah.
You gotta get these. It's too late now, but if these that are printed are a lot better than the written rotten.
I was a son of a doctor.
We'll give you a handwriting class after the meeting.
Anyway, I hope everybody can hear me. Am I talking loud enough? First of all, I'd like to thank all of you that came here tonight to support the negative vote against this. There are terrific people in this room, and I really appreciate them showing up. The key here is the traffic. It'll be, hopefully, you won't worry about the parking down towards the vistas, where we have the beautiful parkway. I don't want to see two lanes being coming either way. We don't want to have them happening. The key here is that the people who do that, and we think that we're the best decision now, whether we're looking for it or not, because it's really important. We're going to check, we're concerned, we're concerned about fire, we're concerned about all the people that we need to. The conflict is that we're at least, we want everybody to put us a good negative vote. Please, here we are, we need your help and your support, because I can't wait, I can't wait to support you, and this is what we're going to do. All right? So, make the vote, because these people are scared, they're worried for you, they're scared of you, they can't wait. All right? Thank you very much.
Danell Nasdel?
Mestre.
Nasdel, sorry about that.
I'm Daniel Mestre.
And next, please, be a mark, on guard for our loss. Hirsch, thank you.
I'm Daniel Mestre. I've been in the community 14 years, and that son of a doctor and I walked around 100 houses last Sunday, passing out forms to let people know what was going on. And the houses that we went to were all along, past the town, all down Canyon Vista, heading west. We were on both sides, handing out pamphlets to let people know. Every door that opened, nobody knew that this was happening. Nobody knew that an apartment complex was going to be built up above. And the only thing that I ask for them to do is that there are 1,478 homes in our community, in our community. But what they're saying that we've built and we enjoy our community, let 1,478 people know what's going to be happening in our community, because we are all affected by it, with our traffic, our, our school, our schools, our homes, traffic, everything that we live in this small community is affected by this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be Kirk Woodlift?
I have lived in the vistas...
State your name, and also an address.
I have lived in the vistas since 1993, and I love it. It's a great community. But we do not need and do not want these multifamily dwellings. I have lived with our apartments before, and trust me, it is not fun. Our traffic situation is terrible, the school is overcrowded. We just don't need it. And as far as the roundabout goes, I've nearly been rear-ended twice in that roundabout, because people refuse to slow down, and I almost had a motorcycle in my backseat. But we don't want it, because I know the type of people who live in apartments. Thank you.
Kirk Woodlift?
Is there a Kirk Woodlift?
Good evening. Spencer Erickson, as you said, I live at 2265 Stoneview Drive in the vistas. There'll be plenty of people before and after me that are speaking eloquently about why as a community we're opposed to this apartment complex. I figured I would take a shot, as an engineer, at addressing the zoning question just before you, and specifically in Mr. Criddon's assessment about that the rezoning to multifamily use fits with the surrounding land use. So, as you can see from those maps, this department complex would be an island of apartments within a sea of single-family homes. And I have no doubt that, back in 1988, in the master plan, there was conceived to have apartment buildings within the vistas. You can see from the map that there's three different areas. But if you read that plan closer, they talk about all those apartment complexes coming together along with the school, a fire station, and a community center to provide a village atmosphere in the center of the vistas. And none of those other aspects, save the school, have been built. So, I think it's a disingenuous reading of the master plan to look at a built-out development 30 years after the plan with no other multifamily homes, and look at one isolated piece of land and think that it's consistent with that master plan to put a multifamily complex in the middle of that built-out development. Speaking as a homeowner, we also have concerns as directly impacted by this apartment building. Besides all the traffic issues that everyone's already spoken to, we're concerned about parking. As has been stated, that lot is only 7.7 acres. I would say two or three of those acres are on a steep hillside that aren't developable. And if you're going to put 75 units, I don't see how you can fit enough parking spaces to fit all the... spaces to fit all the residents' parking and all their visitors' parking. And you can't park on the Los Altos parkway. So any extra overflow parking from that complex is gonna spill out into the surrounding neighborhoods on Goodwin and Dry Gulch and Stoneview. And that is certainly not consistent with the current land use of all the single-family homes around it. Other people have spoken about the character of the vistas and why we all like living there and the green belt. Not impugning the character of people that live in apartments, I think we can all agree that it's a more transient population of people that aren't homeowners, they're not taking pride in maintaining their property, they're not feeling like they're a member of a community. It's a place for them to stay in between other movements to other places to live. And I guess the last thing I would just say, I don't think everyone here is opposed to all development at all costs. We're not expecting that that piece of land is gonna remain bare ground forever. We're just asking that if it is developed, it stays within the consistent use of what the existing homes there are. If you'd planned a zoning change to make it single-family homes and put fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five homes on there, I don't think you'd have any turnout tonight. It's merely the fact of this development that is so out of character with the rest of development that has got people up in arms in protecting their way of life that they like. Thank you for your time.
My name is Joyce Carter. I live at 2271 Stoneview Drive. I moved there in 1993 when they first started building. I agree with everyone who's spoken, people that have heard from our neighborhood. It is a great neighborhood, and we'd like for it to remain same. I'm concerned about the traffic, school, safety of children. I'm a doctor, and I'm experienced in considering what happens to the kids. It would be very insane. I have a plan of speaking, but since you called my name, I wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And next will be Tom Munzle.
Howdy, my name is Randy Connors, and I live at 2326 Advocus Court in Sparks. And I would like to thank the commission for your attention to the details of this particular event. And I'd also like to thank my fellow citizens and neighbors for also coming here. I think democracy works best when we all participate, and we know that some old documents from 1988 necessarily rule our lives. I'm sure the Pi would probably had a different kind of plan for this area, too, but that really wasn't... That doesn't make any difference to us today. One of my main concerns is, of course, that the traffic, like everyone else, and one of the things I'm concerned about, too, is excavation of the property. I'm not sure exactly how much land will have to be taken off that property, but it's... I'm sure it's gonna be significant. And I don't think the traffic studies that have been done figure that into it, the number of trucks that have come out of that road to take all that dirt out of there to make that area livable and buildable. And so I'd like to see if the city staff could do something about that. And on that point, I'm sorry, I wanna make a little comment here, too, about city staff. It always seems unfair for any kind of development that they always speak for the developer, not really necessarily for the citizens. Very rarely do they have any negative thing to say about any kind of development, but it's always the positive things, and always especially the little details in other documents that they talk about that would approve, that would move for approval. And when the other thing I have to add is, Mike, as the owner, if you would commit a decision to keep the same number of units for the apartment complex and that you would basically agree not to increase the number of units that you have planned for that, because that's one of my concerns, too, is that... And that's maybe something that the city staff should address or look into as well. If this is approved, will they have the ability to bump up the number of apartments? That's a big concern for me, because that could be a two-story development initially, and then it goes to three-story, four-story, who knows? So, and also, Mike, I'd like to ask that if this was developed, that you make a commitment to the neighborhood that you would also make payments to the door or HOAs for the preservation of the property. I don't see anything like that in the plan, and I would like to see something like that, at least some kind of admission that, you know, that a property owner understands the viability of this neighborhood and the uniqueness of this neighborhood. Because unfortunately, I think sometimes the way these things go, they always get approved, but, you know, and they always change. But anyway, and then my last thing is that, again, with regard to traffic, you know, people leave, but the city engineer would talk about, you know, how one of the ways that you can manage this smaller property is to, you know, basically go to all of these parks you seen having built themselves, fully highway-based, you know, Los Altos, and also fully, you know, be very accessible. Only things I didn't really advise was this, and the traffic on this is here for a group that has been on that one week, and schools open, it's gonna be a problem. Well, some people did mention that, but I wanted to re-encourage that this is a particular one. Anyway, thank you so much for your attention and the ability to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Munzle.
Munios.
And then next will be James Clopton?
Okay, and actually, my name is Tom Munios.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. And I live at 4688 Goodman Court in the cul-de-sac of this... And these are some of my concerns. Number one is I just was thinking about drainage issues. You know, right now in that area, I assume the water just soaks into the natural ground. But, you know, what happens? You know, where's this water gonna go? I think another gentleman mentioned some issues with the flooding. The other is high structure. Currently, there are no two-story structures in this area. So an apartment, you know, if it's three stories high, it would be an eyesore. It just doesn't fit into the residential one-story home location there. And right now, I live right behind on this rock hill on the other side where this apartment would be built. Right now, I have a totally private backyard patio area. I really don't want that, you know, to have someone in an apartment, you know, looking down into my backyard. Also, this rock hill is right now, to me, it's a home of snakes, lizards, squirrels, gophers. I just kinda wonder what would happen with the construction. Would this drive these animals towards, you know, the residential area? I mean, I just... I'm just... I don't know. Also, as people have mentioned, the traffic, again, it might create a nightmare traffic situation. Now, lastly, this is a beautiful, quiet, safe, single-family neighborhood, and it's been my home for seventeen years. I just ask the commission, you know, please, don't destroy this community by allowing the area in question to be rezoned for the purpose of building apartments. It's just a bad idea. And I believe it's the duty of the commission to take into account all of the things I just mentioned and the ones that have been mentioned by my fellow residents living in the community, and just do the right thing and vote no on rezoning the area in question. Thank you so much for listening.
James Clopton? And next to follow will be Jacqueline and Sam Miller.
Good evening. Let me speak tonight. My name is Jim Clopton. I'm here with my wife, Tracy, a forty-five-year Sparks resident. We are strongly opposed to a long-standing zoning plan. The area, the roads are not sufficient for any more traffic at the AM or PM rush hour. Just learned 17,500 car rule, but is that per hour over a 24-hour span? Because plenty of cars can be there at three in the morning. I didn't know which 17,500, which hour that was chosen. There's not enough room. That's been noted by plenty of my neighbors. Back up to the swimming pool area, soon to be back up to the current apartments over there on the right as you're going up the hill. Everything, the school, but they've spoken, they already have, 779 students, which is far too many. My family units have already been installed over the last few years. The class setting, my son wanted to have. As a ton of people have asked about those dues, we do pay. We appreciate paying, that's what we get for those dues. $290 a year it is right now. I'm just wondering if a sixty-four-year complex is gonna pay $290 to sixty-four a year to, you know, exactly pay their dues? And what about the property value decrease? Seventy-five or 750, and there's a... Last gentleman spoke, multiple homes are gonna lose property value. They're definitely gonna lose back their place, and that bill is gone. Anyway, as I mentioned here, the request for zoning change is just too... With the genuine model of our community in our neighborhood. And my wife and I respectfully ask for no zoning change on this parcel. And truly, not because we're anti-growth, by any means we're not, but because we're supporters of intelligent plan development. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, James.
Can I donate those fifty-six seconds to the next guy?
Jacqueline and Sam Miller?
My name is Jacqueline Miller. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Sam Miller. We are residents of the vistas since 1999. We back up to the roundabout. Our backyard is on the parkway, roundabout. That was not there when we purchased our home. That became a development requirement when Miramonte went onto the books. In the eighteen years that we've lived in our home, we have never, ever experienced a day that there was not traffic from development, all the way up to triple trucks going around the roundabout. Now they can take Belmar, but that isn't always the case. I really don't know what the requirements are of the contractor to see that triples do not go on Los Altos through the roundabout. I can only appeal to you as a seventy-four-year-old and as well as my husband that we bought this as a retirement home. We have invested thousands of dollars just in our landscaping, and we really appreciate the environment of our community. I will not go over all the issues that other people have brought up about traffic and so forth, but I really am in disagreement with what was said here from the gentleman that said there was a traffic report done. It is not accurate as to what's going down Los Altos every day, because we have become a through street, just like Vista is a through street from Spanish Springs. We have now become one of the thoroughfares through the neighborhood, not just local to our neighbors, but coming from Costco neighborhood area as well, from Los Altos on that end. I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you really put a lot of heart and thought into this consideration. Thank you.
Terry Riddle?
My name's Terry Riddle, and I live at 5196 Canyon Run. And I live in house... I live in... At 5196 Canyon Run, and I've been there for... Since 1992. I live in house one, lot number one. And so I've seen everything go on in that neighborhood. Okay, what's going on in this neighborhood? It is a noise issue. And it's noise because it's... This is located on a mountain and in a canyon. That's why they call Canyon Run Canyon Run. We're in a canyon. Canons echo. And nobody's addressed that, and I find that to be a real problem. When it's in a canyon like that, there's no control over trucks now. There's no control over cars with exhaust. There's no control over any of that. The City of Sparks is doing nothing for that. Or... And in my opinion, to be done to address that, I have an inch and a half and two inches of sheet rock on the back of my house, and I write where they hit passing gear every day. And I tell you, it shakes my house. The nails in my house are out, driven out this far from the vibration. There are at least one percent of this group or more that live on Canyon, on the parkway. And these people have backyards, and I guarantee you that. That's a fact. Nobody can use their backyard because the traffic is so bad. It needs to be addressed. Mr. Erickson over here and his rep... Beasley, Lieutenant, the Captain, and everybody else has been up there to that school and years about what's going on on this parkway, and nobody's done anything about it. And I say it's high to somebody takes control of the park, namely the City of Sparks, and do something because of the noise. You can't take a guy with an expensive exhaust truck, and he's gonna hear it echo. He's gonna... As far as it'll go, because it sounds great. That's why they buy them. That's what they do. Nobody's addressing that. I'm addressing it because that's what's going on. As soon as they... They love it. Their foot goes to the floor. When the speed limit is at 35 miles per hour, and it used to be at... That became a... Raised the speed limit. I don't know who did it, but the City of Sparks did it. Huh?
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw a flash up there. Go ahead.
The City of Sparks raised that speed limit and ruined that. That has to be readdressed, and they need to lower that speed limit back down. Number one for kids, number two for people walking their dogs, number three for the children trying to cross the street. I sit and watch the kids cross Canyon Run across Los Altos with their lunch... Absolutely frightened to death to cross there, because...
Thank you, Terry.
All right.
Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Williams? Folks, we still got a few more to go, so let's hold the clapping, please. Kathleen Williams? And next will be Shane McLachlan?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Williams, and I apologize because I didn't intend to speak also, but just here to support everybody. The biggest issues to me, as we're hearing, are the traffic and the safety. And we... As a... I'm a teacher in this district as well, and I am telling you, I know firsthand what an overcrowded room is like. I'm gonna be teaching thirty-two kids this year, and we don't need to add any more than we need to at this time, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an R. Richardson? Is there an R. Richardson, please?
Yeah, but I didn't wish to speak. That's okay.
Thank you very much. Kevin Maloney? And next will be Frank Hill?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Maloney. I live at 5125 Canyon Run Drive. I've been a homeowner and resident of the vistas since 1992. Additionally, I served on the initial board of directors that took control of the vistas from the developer back in ninety-two. I found it interesting, we had over a hundred and fifty people when... Here in the building when this session started earlier this evening, which is roughly about ten percent of the home... Homes in the population of the vistas, which is a remarkable turnout. In years past... In years past, the, um, we had a problem getting a quorum to even be able to initiate business on behalf of the association. I also thought it was interesting that your own planning staff referred to the rezoning as an anomaly. Yes, it is. You're taking a 29-year-old document and with the hindsight of decades of policy massaging it to someone's own self-serving ends. So, uh, obviously I'm in opposition of this and would ask for you to consider not voting in favor of it, and look at your constituency that's represented here tonight and respect their wishes. Thank you.
You. Frank Hill, please. Frank Hill. How about a Wesley Griffin? How about a Julia Richardson?
Well, Julia Richardson, 2296 Vista Terrace Lane. Um, I just want to echo again about the traffic and how many of you have been in the face of a fire? I don't know. I don't know how many of you have, but it's pretty scary. Traffic is backed up, it's going to be really scary. One thing, that was written, um, did call for a fire station, that wasn't built, um, but also I expect a lot of the, uh, ground conditions have changed since then. Cheek glass is much more prevalent on the hillsides, and it's really not, and, you can tell I'm not used to speaking in public. Um, the Greenstone Fire could have been very different had the winds blown differently. So, that is a consideration, and I don't think the traffic, considered that. Thank you.
You. Do we have, is that, uh, Eural Carter?
Eural Carter, at 2271 Stoneview Drive?
Errol.
Errol. Oh, they just left, okay.
Oh.
This wife spoke.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Errol Clum.
Errol Clum?
Clum.
Clum? Oh, there you go.
I thought I checked the box not to speak, but after everybody's speaking, I thought I'd speak. I live on Stoneview Drive also, and, uh, we love our community, and I'm sorry for that person that lives so close to the roundabout where the development is going to go. I think it's ridiculous. I think maybe the gentleman there should have lived in the complex for five years if you give him approval and move from California to Nevada like most Californians are doing. No traffic study was done when it snows. No one has said anything about when it snows up there. We can't get around. Half the time, the city doesn't plow our streets. It's going to be a disaster. Um, thank you very much.
How about a Jeff Lour? L O U R, I think it is. Jeff? Oh, Love.
Sorry about that. 346 Stoneview Drive. And I'll keep it short, I'm just reiterating what everybody else is saying. I was lucky enough to grow up in the vistas and moved out with my now-wife at age 21, and we tried the apartment living, and then I had a family and realized that was not a place to raise a family, at least I didn't think so. So, I don't think we should put an apartment complex smack dab in the middle of this beautiful community that we all work very hard to live in and, and up, keep up. Um, thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you guys make the right decision.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, how about an Angelo Carmella?
My name's Angelo Carmella. I live at 4526 Goodwin Road. Um, wasn't planning on speaking, but, uh, I'm totally in opposition to this because I'm concerned about safety issues, I'm concerned about crime, I'm concerned about traffic, and we have a beautiful neighborhood up there. It's safe and comfortable, and I would suggest if, uh, you haven't been up there, you should take a ride up, take a look at that tiny little lot that they plan on putting that huge complex on. Thank you.
You. I have no other written ones. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? You must, uh, come forward and fill out a card. State your name and address, please.
I already filled out a card, but I couldn't, I didn't want to speak, but they're asking me. Mary Nuvot. I live at 4692 Goodwin Court. I've lived there for 12 years. Moved here when I retired from Los Angeles. The vistas is a beautiful, beautiful community. The homeowners association does a wonderful job of maintaining the integrity, you know, of just the, the landscaping and how people keep their houses and everything. I cannot understand with all the land there must be to build apartments, why anyone would want to plop an apartment building down in that spot in the midst of totally nothing but single-family dwellings? You know, it's been that way a long time, and that people would like to stay that way. It's a bad location just, you know, from every standpoint. It's going to be really bad for noise. I happen to live fairly close to where it will be. I have no idea how much of that hill behind there they plan to take down, but I believe it is two to three million-year-old basalt. I don't think it's going to be easy to get down. Um, it's just, it's, it's very, very sad, and I'm worried about property values, as I'm sure other people are. I just think it's a really stupid plan, and I hope you will vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Luke. I, I live at 2284 Vista Terrace Lane. I want to make sure I understand what the meaning of this, this D rating for the streets is. My understanding it's on a A through F scale, and so what we're saying is that this currently has a rating of a D. Adding more, more apartments is only going to reduce that to an F rating. Yeah, I do, I don't personally think that it's acceptable to say something that's a D, which to me is a failing grade, put it down to an F rating. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Those of you that had filled out a request but didn't want to speak, we're here, we have to give you all a reasonable time to speak and your thing, but I had read in the record that you're opposed to this and you choose not to speak, so please don't double up on me if you can, please. Thank you, sir.
My name is Jonathan Phillips from 5397 Desert Stone. I'm a teacher at, uh, my kids are starting kiddo this year. Thank you for having my birthday, by the way. Uh, every day I, and, uh, right before I get to the sound, I'm like, I'm my kids, because that's, I'm going to school, you know? Usually I'm not really, but, uh, I see Jack with her shoes that have those little roller skates, and she's crossing down the, and she goes over to the path, right before you cut in, and she's zooming, and it's not even, it has all the little, and she's zooming. I think it's, uh, out of the question. I see, uh, kids running, second grade sister, uh, taking care of, and they're running so far ahead, and they're saying, and with this tiny little fuck face that you want to build and have people run there, these kids, someone's going to get hit, and they're going to run over, and you are going to have to look at your baby, they reapprove of that, and that's, it scares me, especially when my kids, and it's funny point, walk to school. The other thing is, um, our sixth grade, we have three, three, uh, may I, uh, help, but our sixth graders are maxed out. Why? Because the fifth graders, we have five classes, the fourth grade has five, third grade has six, second grade six, third grade six. If you notice all the numbers, and it's going to continue to get, especially with the Belmar unit, I also, Desert Stone, I love to kick my walk on a dog, probably where I can be, it's on the top of the hill, where they have all the cut, cut out walk, three dots, I love to kick them, but I know that that plan is going to go through at some point, so what are we going to do when everyone has this behind? What are we going to do, especially when we have, I don't understand, because the school, the school, it is over that, we're doing the best job we can, but if we let the, it's going to be nice at the school, and the safety of children, okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Joe Heineck. I live at 2202 Snowdrift Court, and I also was not planning on speaking today, but when I bought the home in 2000, or in 97, I was not only assured, but in writing, that there would be no development within three blocks past my home. Well, three blocks past my home, there's 700 homes up there. Everything from, from, uh, two blocks past my home, all the way up the mountain and around the side. Um, not only is there a traffic concern, one of my businesses is serving DeAndrea and the vistas, and it's impossible to service these people in the morning because of the traffic. Not only is, is that a concern, but the children, like it or not, they're on their phones. They don't pay attention to any traffic at all. Um, they, they cross the street with the phones in their face and no, with no regard to the traffic that's coming at them. Um, there's been at least 100 times in the last three years alone that I've been approaching or in the roundabout where I've had to slam on my brakes because of someone, someone's disregard and they plow through it, and that's going to affect the children as well. On, on top of that, I back up to, um, Vista Heights where these supposed speed bumps were put in to slow down traffic, and all they do is accelerate traffic and peel out once they hit the, the, the so-called round, or the, the speed bumps. Um, I hear that day and night at 3:00 in the morning, um, and it's only going to get worse, and that's, that's all I have to say for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Sharon Taylor.
I live at 4663 Goodwin Road. I have been there as of yesterday 20 years. I have a really big concern about the kids going down, um, Goodwin. They're on their scooters or whatever they're called and everything, and they're riding in the street down, you know, not paying much attention to the cars or anything, their bikes, their street, they're, instead of being on the sidewalk, they're in the middle of the street. That's one concern. One of these days, one of those kids is going to get hit. Another concern is because Goodwin is the first street after this thing that they want to build, we're going to have cars parked all the way down Goodwin because they're not going to have anyplace else to park, and as it is, we have a lot of rentals on Goodwin where they've got three, four, five cars in one house, and they're parking everywhere. So, it, it's just, it's out of the question as far as I'm concerned. I pay dues, I don't have much income, and I don't expect people to be moving in an apartment and not paying for the parkway and all the things that we maintain. So I would appreciate it if you'd really put yourself in our place and stop and think how you'd feel if it was your home. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none.
Chairman Peterson?
Yes.
I do have seven more names I would like to read into the record, but I missed them.
One, one moment, we have a person up here.
I've been living in the vista since, uh, 2004, and, uh, I'd like to ask a few questions. That what problem are we trying to solve here? Do we have a need for apartments where we live? Because I haven't noticed whatsoever. We have a sea of homes that all these people here take very good care of. Uh, lady earlier mentioned that, uh, no notices were sent out to, uh, everybody in the community only within 750, 50 feet. Even with that, you got maybe 100 homes that, uh, are represented here, the rest of them didn't know, and they still don't know probably, because there was no effort other than the 100 homes and probably all the people that are here to, uh, be contacted to come over here and represent where they live. So what that means is that even this little amount of people here having this serious concern about where we live, it has to be, has to say something for what problem are we trying to solve? We live in Nevada, there's a lot of desert land here. Why put this here in the middle of these homes? It just makes absolutely no sense, other than maybe make some money for these people? Everybody's got a right to, uh, buy a piece of property, but where we live, we take very good care, and we take, we have very high pride on what we do and how we treat our homes, and we like this property to remain at least within consistence of the guidelines. Whenever we bought this place and we paid for the dues on the HOA to, uh, maintain this, uh, green parkway, uh, the way it is, to not have to change, not have to put a three-lane, uh, road going down the way, just because to, uh, fit what, uh, this many, uh, uh, more homes and more traffic would bring in. I just, uh, it just makes no sense. Uh, there are plenty of property lots, uh, everywhere else. We just don't need this here, we don't want this here, and it just makes no sense. Thank you.
You. Mary, how many do you have to read now?
I have seven additional names.
Go ahead, since we started this, go ahead and put them in there, let that, read them.
Colleen Williams. Ken Williams. Stephen Hook. Sarah Hook. Greg Cyfers. Charles and Linda Gray.
At this point, I will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission here for discussion and our possible motion, please. Ian, you might come up there, there's a lot of questions that we had had. Ian, you might come up, there's, there's a lot of questions that we had, had among staff, and we might want to ask, uh, any questions from the commissioners, or staff?
I, I had two, Mr. Chairman, um, for, for staff. Ian, in, in, uh, your staff report and in your presentation tonight with respect to finding Z two, um, you said that the developer, um, believed that single fam, had always anticipated single-family residential in this, or had always anticipated multifamily residential in this area adjacent to single-family residential, um, and that, and that it was compatible. Does the city have an opinion, um, on compatibility?
Uh, yeah, I, I should say, yes, the, the city agreed that that was compatible by, by virtue of approval of this, the handbook with those two land uses adjacent to each other.
And my second question is, um, I think we had a lot of comment tonight, you know, about traffic impact to, you know, to schools and infrastructure and drainage. If this rezoning were to be recommended by the commission to the city council, and the city council were to approve the rezoning request, um, how, and there would be a potential future apartment complex on this site, how would that future development be reviewed by the city?
So, uh, all multifamily projects, uh, or developments are required to go through administrative review process, in which the, the city looks at what they're actually proposing. Uh, right now, uh, as you know, um, there's no project, or at this point, we're, we're just discussing actual rezoning of the property. Um, at the project level, when that administrative review is reviewed, uh, we would look at the specifics of, you know, how are they gonna move in and out of the property, how circulation gonna move through it, um, fire, engineering, uh, uh, planning, environmental control, there's a lot of agencies are, within the city are, are viewed, uh, we also route that through the school district, um, through, um, RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, um, as well as Washoe County Health, to, to get input from those adjacent, those other agencies as well, so there's a lot more review that happens at that level when the project comes through.
Is that a public review? Or publicly, does it allow for a public hearing?
No, it's administrative.
Um, when would be the dates if the commission were to forward this rezoning request to the city council? When would that potentially be for our interested public?
Commissioners and Commissioner Carey specifically, to your question, we would anticipate that, uh, the, uh, first reading of an ordinance, uh, would occur on, at the first meeting in September, uh, and then, uh, the second would be, the second reading in the public hearing would be, uh, at the second meeting in September, and let me pull up the calendar, and I will give you those dates. Uh, the dates would be the eleventh and the twenty-fifth of September.
Okay, so first reading of the city council, September eleventh, and then second reading was twenty-fifth?
Yeah, and the, and the public hearing typically occurs at the sec, at the second reading, so, uh, we would anticipate, uh, that whatever goes forward to the city council would happen on the twenty-fifth of September in terms of a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question.
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, I do, Chairman Peterson, excuse me. Uh, Ian, it said that on June twenty-sixth, you did meet with the HOA, we've heard a lot of comments about Los Altos, and that the HOA pays to maintain Los Altos parkway in the beautiful condition it's in. On the June twenty-sixth, in your staff report, you said that the initial concern was that the homeowners association had was that the rezoning would pull the parcel out of the Vista's plan development. Uh, is that the case? Because it wasn't answered, or would this parcel still be in the plan development, paying dues to maintain Los Altos parkway?
Yes, it would stay in the plan development, and they would have to pay dues or, and so forth, as appropriate.
Um, and there was some also questions on drainage and rain, specifically, uh, uh, heavy storm, uh, and I know we have a hydraulic report in here, talking about the drainage and the infrastructure, uh, what do you, what's the plans and how they see water that does fall in this, uh, parcel, and where does it go?
Joe, I'm just a city engineer, whatever, um, I have to get back to the, your initial question, um, with regards to the funding, the, the HOA, the license on, uh, Los Altos.
Yes, please.
The sidewalks, the, the city of Sparks maintains the roadway, so, um, it's, it's hard for the, to maintain it.
Gotcha.
But for...
Barts to the storm drainage, um, the, the storm drain system up there has been designed to, to carry the hundred-year storm event, um, and that what was referred to earlier, that, you know, there was a thunderstorm up there, um, in the vistas, I believe in ninety-seven. Typically, when we see those thunderstorms, they exceed the, the hundred-year storm event, um, and that in, in some cases, we get a thousand-year storm event. It, it's, it, you know, we get ten times the amount of water that, that some of these, uh, some of the, um, storm, storm drain facilities were designed for, so I want to keep that in mind, you know, a typical storm event, you know, a, a ten-year, five-year, the, the storm drain facilities, um, can adequately convey that water, but it's those, the thunderstorms that we have issues with. But with respect to your question, the, the storm drain system up in the vistas was designed to carry the hundred-year storm event. Where, and the water here drains? It, it drains to the south. Yeah.
Down Los Altos in the ditch.
Yeah.
Ian, in your report, usually, uh, and I don't know if we're to this point, we've heard a lot about the school, but Beasley and different things, did you reach out to Washoe County, and did they send anything back to you?
Uh, at this point, we have not, uh, typically rezonings do not go to the, uh, the school district without a, a plan, they, they have a hard time developing any sort of response.
When would that be?
At the, during the administrative review process, we would contact them, and they, they are very good about responding with, uh, any sort of, uh, conditions they feel they need from us, and we, we include what is, uh, our ability to include.
I have a question. Uh, per the report, it says the existing land use is multifamily residential, ten to fourteen minutes, and then our proposed zoning is residential multifamily, twelve to fourteen minutes, so, what's the reasoning for going from the existing to the proposed when it pretty much is saying the same thing?
So, if, if I understand what you're looking at correctly, I, I believe what you're looking at is the, the master plan land, or shouldn't say master plan, the comprehensive plan land use, and the zoning that's being requested. There, there's an existing comprehensive land use, comprehensive plan land use on this property that allows ten to fourteen units. The zoning being requested allows twelve to fourteen units. Um, as was mentioned, this is an oddity, in that it is currently zoned PD as part of the vistas, but the development process laid out in the Vista's handbook says when a multifamily product or project comes forward for development, they have to rezone to a multifamily zoning, which is what is being requested at this time, and that's the MF two with the twelve to fourteen units per acre.
Mr. Cretton, um, you described the, the rezoning as an oddity for a plan development. Would we typically see a rezoning inside a, a plan development, or?
No, uh, typically, once an area is incorporated into a plan development, it, it stays that way with, subject to amendments to the hand, the, the handbook, or the plan development would have to be amended for it to be changed in its zoning. Uh, like I said, this is an oddity, in that it, it requires rezoning.
Is that because in, in general, a plan development handbook is the zoning?
Correct. Uh, the plan development handbook operates as essentially the zoning code for the development for which it's, it's been put in place for.
I'm sorry to do this to you, but not essentially, right? It actually does replace the zoning code for that parcel.
Correct, it is the zoning code for that location.
I'm gonna shift gears on you now. So, we've talked a little bit about a lack of a specific project, and you've talked about the administrative review process. You listed off things that city staff would consider when reviewing a specific project, when it walks through the door, if it walks through the door. Would the administrative review process take into account parking?
Yes, it would, they, the administrative review would require that all parking for this, uh, site be provided onsite, um, for, for whatever level of development comes in through the door.
And would the administrative review process also address hillside development?
It would. Our zoning code, uh, specifically has requirements for hillside development, and the, the, the volume of land that can be disturbed depending on the slope, and that would have to be followed for any project that came through for administrative review.
And so, the volume of parking required and the amount of space allowed to be disturbed under the city's hillside development ordinance, that would drive the density of this project, correct?
Yes, it would. It would impact the density that it could actually be developed.
And so that density is probably less than the seventy-some-odd?
That, that could be safely assumed.
If I may, uh, augment, uh, Mr. Cretton's, uh, answer to that, in terms of the, the actual yield on the site, uh, there are in the zoning codes other standards that would, that would have an impact on that, uh, including height and setbacks, so, uh, those, those two in particular will, will further reduce the, um, um, probably the, the actual yield of a project. Uh, really, that, you know, that's the, that's the project designer's responsibility, is to look at the site, look at the constraints on it, and, uh, and then design to the, to those criteria in the zoning code.
There is a high restriction on that area.
In the, in the, yeah, sure, go ahead.
The high restriction in MF two is thirty feet, same as all the single-family in the zoning code.
But I'll bring it back to the commission for, uh, discussion and a possible motion.
Well, I, I would like a little bit of discussion on it. Um, I can, personally, I cannot find, uh, finding Z two, uh, because when you do, I, I just do not see that the surrounding residential, uh, when you have LDR, which is single-family residential's, uh, divided by a seven, uh, all around a seven-acre unit, um, I just don't think that multifamily adjacent to that is, um, I just can't find that finding in, in Z two. And, uh, I do appreciate, Ian's, uh, that many plan develops in Sparks are adjacent to, um, uh, current single-family with multifamily, and you have those listed as Wingfield, Kylie Ranch, those are all newer, uh, developments than, um, what the vistas are, Vista is. Um, I, I do want to say a little bit about staff and how well they take, this is, this is, uh, tough stuff for them to look at and do, um, and they do take, there were some comments, I think, by the, um, some people that, um, they kind of try to shove it down or, um, move things around, and that's not the case, they really take, um, very big pride in our city, and they do a great job, um, doing things out like that. But, there is a, if you haven't noticed, there is somewhat of a housing crisis here in our, uh, in our area, with affordable housing, and one of the answers to that is apartments, um, may not fit, in my personal opinion, would not fit in this area surrounded by, um, single-family residential, and, uh, taking a thirty-year-old map that had a circle that, um, may not be relevant now, in my opinion, because of the other, um, areas that haven't been developed on how they are. The staff takes all that stuff into very big consideration in trying to infill, trying to find places for people to live in our city, and I appreciate the work that they did on this. But this is why we have public hearings, we would love to hear what the public has to say, and development happens. The people that own the vistas, I, uh, personally live off of Disc Drive, and there was a gentleman that had a pig farm down on Disc and, uh, Vista, and he probably was complaining about all of us moving there, and development has to happen, how we get new schools, how we get better roads, a lot of times, is how the development comes out, how do we get better sewer? Development usually helps fund that, and fuel that.
I agree, you know, it's something about these public comments, and it turned out that few people is affecting, believe me, and, and we're glad to hear all of your comments. But I have to agree with, uh, you, Commissioner, that I really don't see, in my opinion, and again, I like to back staff, because they do work very, very hard, don't take it right that they don't, because they do, and they do a very fine job. But, in this particular case, again, I cannot see that that particular location with all the single-family residential in that area should be supported by multiple family in the midst of all of that, and so in that case, I agree with you on that, but that's a personal opinion, and I'm not overlooking anything that staff did to bring it in, I, I, I really can't find any objections with the findings and, and anything like that, so I really can't base any of my opinions, I just don't feel the area should support a multiple family complex. Again, people, I think that's only my opinion. But we still got the commissioners up here, and the vote will be cast, and a motion will be made, and that'll be, I want to remind you again, that whatever way it is, it is not final, whatever we recommend here only goes to the city council, and they make the final decision, so you've got to understand that.
Chairman Peterson?
I might add too, um, I lived in the vistas for about ten years, and I listened to this gentleman, it's a teacher at Bud Beasley, and I too have, you know, seen these kiddles walking across the street, a very busy street that's gotten busier and busier, and, uh, I, um, have serious concerns about that, too, you know, it's not just increased vehicle traffic, it's the foot traffic that the vehicle traffic could adversely affect, and, so I just want to add that comment in there as well.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you commissioners for, for the discussion. Um, I think, you know, this, this is a tough one, it's a really weird circumstance where we have, you know, an existing plan development, and a handbook that's nearly thirty years old, and that's now kind of coming into, into fruition. Um, I think it's, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of unclear, you know, the process that we're following, a lot of technical jargon, uh, I think a lot of the public might be a little confused about what, what we're talking about, um, but I think, you know, with, with the way I'm looking at it, this is, you know, when we look at rezones, it's, it's a land use issue, and the question for the, for the commission tonight is, is the proposed zoning consistent with the land use for, for, for this, for this property? Um, I, I concur with staff's recommendation on, um, finding Z one, you know, this, this, uh, site has been designated as multifamily since nineteen eighty-eight, in this handbook, and it's been carried over in our master planning processes since that time, and during the master planning processes, the community has an opportunity to look at, you know, compatibility and those kind of things. And I also agree with staff's recommendation that this, uh, zone change, you know, would help support goal H one, policies H one, H two, and CF one, uh, of, of our comprehensive plan. With respect to finding Z two, and I appreciate the discussion from my fellow commissioners on that, um, I like staff's recommendation, um, that the proposed, you know, multifamily zoning is compatible with the existing land uses, because it has been approved that way since nineteen eighty-eight, it's been carried over in terms of the designation, land use designation since, since that time. I think another good point that, um, was brought up by staff tonight was that, you know, there is open space, you know, there's no, there's no, there's no portion of this property that goes directly adjacent to single-family, and, um, and I think that that, that open space and the topography of the, of the, of the property.
Little order, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so I think, you know, that, that will help buffer this, so I'm able to make finding Z two, appreciate the public for not booing me too bad. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead, Mr. Chairman, just give me a second here, I'd like to make a motion, if that's acceptable. Um, I would like, this should be interesting to see how this goes. I, I move to make a, forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the requests associated with PCN seventeen zero zero three two, to rezone a parcel approximately seven point seven two acres in associated with PCN 170032 to rezone a parcel approximately 7.72 acres in size from PD to MF2/PD. I want to make it clear for the record that my motion is MF2/PD, not PUD. 12 to 14 units per acre based on finding Z1 through Z3 and the facts supporting these findings in the staff report.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second to move it along.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
No, any discussion.
Or any other discussion? Yeah, you can go ahead and discuss. Do you have any?
No, we should call for it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No.
Aye.
Frankly, that's not the end of the story.
Yeah. And I just want to, everybody, I just voted no because I could not find Z2, the findings on Z2 on single-family residential.
So, actually, Mr. Chairman, I think that this is, while that motion failed, I think that this is cleaner if you make an affirmative motion to deny if that's the commission's pleasure.
I would like to make a motion to deny, let me get back to that, PCN 17-0032 for that I cannot find, in the staff report, I could not find finding Z2 for that the project is consistent with the surrounding existing land uses.
We have a motion, a second, discussion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, so. Please, will you exit very quietly? We're not through with this meeting. Take your discussions outside. Okay, never mind, five minutes. Good.[1414.65]